All right, let's go and stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance, super.
Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. So I would ask if there are any comments from the public on any items not on tonight's agenda? Hearing, none. I would ask for a motion to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right. That takes us to why we're here tonight, which is the adoption of the 2019-20 budget. And so I turn it over to Jen to provide an overview.
Great, okay. So at this meeting, Kelly and I are going to present the brief overview of the budget for the board's consideration for adoption. When we looked at this budget, we started thinking about and reflecting about what this budget meant and how it achieved all the goals that we wanted to achieve. So first, at 2.37% budget-to-budget increase, we were proud of the fact that 2.34% of that was required contractual costs for benefits and salaries, and then actually a .03 percentage of that reflected a budget-to-budget increase for our programs and operations, which we thought was quite fiscally responsible. We remained below the tax cap by approximately $300,000. Remember, last year, we were over $900,000 below the tax cap, just really showing taxpayers that we are valuing every educational dollar and we are valuing tax-paying dollars that, when appropriate, should be in the hands of the taxpayers as opposed to going to the schools when they're not necessary. We are being responsive to an enrollment decline, and that is how we were able to do that. And we do understand that in the future, should we have a boom in enrollment, the story's going to be quite different. But for right now, it is fiscally responsible to make sure that that money is in the hands of the taxpayers. We continue to look at our per pupil expenditures. Last year, we spent a considerable amount of time understanding how per pupil costs are affected by transportation and many other variables and may not necessarily be the story of a neighboring district. So we parsed that apart and will continue to do so. We looked at really responsible staffing. We maintained our approach to using reserves. Recall that we refinanced our bonds, and over the life expectancy of those bonds, that's a savings of over $2.2 million. We are maintaining our AAA Moody rating. We are one of only a handful of schools that do maintain that. We've been reflective of our technology initiatives, and technology is something that you can't just buy a computer and leave it there forever. We have had to completely change some of our infrastructure, our support systems, our WAN, LAN, all of this new language that we've learned. We also have engaged in rental agreements through BOSI's that have saved the district a considerable amount of money, but while also remaining very cutting-edge in the world of technology. So we're proud that this budget finds students in classrooms who are using Nariva spans to collaborate on math problems and the like, and we've been able to advance in that way. We maintained all of our extracurricular programs. We have so many opportunities for after-school clubs and for after-school sports for our children, and we believe as a school community that developing that sense of community for kids is an integral part of their growing up. We've been able to support that. And really just setting our students apart from their peers and giving them a very unique educational experience and a safe experience, spending the time to look at our security protocols, to work very closely with the town for an additional SRO, to have an actual security manager who is onsite every single day, who is reviewing our security practices for the sake of our children. So we're very proud and reflecting about that budget and how we were able to reach those goals. And Kelly will take us through what you've already seen, but for the sake of the public, just a brief run-through of what that budget entails.
Sure.
Can't sell me his thumb, Doug.
So April 23rd, we are at the budget adoption phase. May 7th will be budget hearing number five, which is the final budget hearing and the review of proposed budget, and then May 21st is our budget vote.
Where?
Crittenen Middle School.
What time?
From 6:30 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Will Crittenen be, will some entity be providing babysitting for the vote?
I don't know. That's usually done by the PTSA.
Yeah.
Some years, they've done it, and some years, they haven't. So we have to.
We'll have to believe they will be.
They are. Oh, yes.
You might need some volunteers, Ira, for the babysitting.
Hey, I babysit again. Those days have returned, actually. I just want to remind the community that, just to reinforce what we said, this vote, the entire district votes at Crittenen. You're not going to your separate polling stations if you might in November for town or national voting. This is a school district vote, and the entire district votes at Crittenen. So don't go to the firehouse or to a library or somewhere. Come to Crittenen, that's where the machines will be.
Be on the lookout for a beautiful brochure, which will be coming out about a week before the budget vote.
And if you have any questions, if you have any questions about the budget, we have, all we want are informed voters. So please, you can find online, we have a lot of information. You can always call the district office, they're happy to help. But the more information you have.
Email Kelly directly.
Does my email address?
Contact her.
Great segue. So in terms of the budget next year, an increase of 2.37%, again, budget-to-budget increase, not your tax levy increase. In terms of the three components of the budget, your program, your instructional component of the budget is 70%. Capital, your buildings, I mean, maintenance of your building is 18%, and then your supervision, your administrative, is approximately 11%. This budget maintains all the programs and services that we currently have, all our state mandated programs, athletics, extracurricular, and transportation. In terms of revenue, the other side of the budget, 88% of it coming from the rent and property taxes, 5% from state aid. Pilots make up 3%, fund balance, again, 3%, and then some other revenues, about 1% total. Back to the revenues, again, about 88% is from the tax levy. That's an increase of 1.94% year-to-year. Again, that's below the maximum allowable tax levy. The maximum allowable is 2.31%, so we're about .37% below the tax, maximum allowable tax levy for this year. Our pilots increased 71, about $71,000, about 2.4% next year. Going forward, just a reminder, the pilot will be decreasing for the next three years. We see a small increase this year, which is the first year of the IBM pilot, but it will be decreasing going forward. Revenue's going up about $25,000, so almost 2.5% essentially interest assumptions, a larger interest assumption. Increase of state aid, additional building aid, we're going to receive as well as some E-rate funds, that's up about 12%. And then additional fund balance, it'll be required, about 1% increase. In terms of the actual tax rates, you'll see North Castle, or the majority of our properties, 86%, are seeing a 1.53% increase in their tax rate. Additional $10.56 per $1,000 of assessed value, again, assessed value, not market value. Some increases, North Castle, 4.5%, a decrease in Bedford, and over 5% increase in. And again, if you want to refer back to the previous presentations, it talks a little more about the changes in assessed value, you'll see historic values in each of these towns, so you'll be able to compare and see why those increases are in each other. Just in summary, a 1.94% increase in the tax levy, almost, again, as Jen said, about $300,000 less than the permissible maximum. A 2.37% budget-to-budget increase and a total budget of $94,534,535. Just in terms of going forward, we have our final budget hearing May 7th, and then the budget vote again May 21st at Crittenen, 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. Finally, if you have any questions, please check the website, all the presentations will be on there, and please feel free to email me any budget-related questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So property tax report card? Anything to report on that front? No? It gets filed. It's a standard form. It gets filed with SED, right? It gets. It needs to be filed with the 24 hours of budget adoption tonight, so I'll either do it tonight or tomorrow morning. And then the newsletter will be out seven-ish days before the budget vote, so you'll be able to see in that. Nothing specific on the tax report card, same as every year. It changed last year's uniform, so this year, pretty same. Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Kelly?
Thank you for all the work.
Yeah, thanks for your first budget season and getting us through it. For at least to this point, we're not done yet, so. Anything on the budget notice that we need to discuss? No? All right, so I would ask for a motion to discuss the resolution to adopt the proposed 2019-20 budget and property tax report card.
Second?
Ira. I don't know.
He's coming back. For the vote, I think we should be here right.
Do you want to do the staff reports and then come back to the vote?
Can we do that? Since he's here. He just stepped out to the. Why don't we come back to the vote?
Yeah, let's come back to, why don't we go to the staff report and then we'll come back. So you have a motion, okay. Perfect.
Yep, so no huge report tonight, but I did want to talk about substantial equivalency. Recall that the Commissioner of Education came out and declared that everybody has to follow the guidelines for substantial equivalency, meaning that we will have to go to all private and parochial schools in our towns and determine that it's a substantially equivalent education to a Byram Hills education. And then the board would have to vote and approve that it is substantially equivalent, and we would then send it to the state. Apparently, it has been hung up at the Supreme Court where they said that this is guidance and is not a regulation, and they would have to follow some regulation language. So now, essentially, everything's on hold, and it's going back to the drawing board for questions. Which I'm happy about, because we would need much greater support for yet another unfunded mandate, and I think that that puts districts, not necessarily Byram Hills, but other districts significantly in harm's way, and the number of schools they would have to review, and the accountability to those schools in saying they're substantially equivalent education. So that was some good news on that front.
And no sense of timing, but.
No, not at all.
It could take a while.
And did you want to go back to?
Yes, unless you have anything else, you might as well finish.
Yeah, I may as well finish.
Yeah.
We just, we really, we really do have to talk about the Con Edison Award. As we know, we have our pitcher, who was pitching tonight, I believe, Carson, was pitching tonight, and he received the Con Edison Scholastic Sports Award. And, you know, Carson was interviewed by WHUD, and Carson Frye is our baseball player, and we couldn't be more proud of him for his accomplishments.
You know, considering the number of schools we have in Westchester, we tend to do very well with the Con Edison Award over the last few years. We really seem to get.
And that is it for my report.
Excellent, okay. So we made a motion to talk about the resolution and adoption for the 2019-20 budget and approval of the property tax report card and the school district budget notice. The motion was seconded, correct?
Yes.
But we have not done anything else, so I guess before I read the resolution and then we vote, anybody have any other questions or, all right, so I will read it.
Just to Kelly, this is your first one, so thank you for your assistance and your help, and we look forward to many more from you.
Thank you. Whereas the Board of Education has received and carefully reviewed a proposed 2019-20 school budget from the Superintendent of Schools, and whereas the Board of Education has held several budget hearings regarding the proposed 2019-20 school budget, and whereas the Board of Education concurs with the administration's recommendation on the contingency budget information to be presented on the school district budget notice regarding the 2019-20 school budget, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Byram Hills Central School District adopts the proposed 2019-20 school budget in the amount of $94,534,535 to present to the voters at the annual meeting on May 21st, 2019, and approves the following proposition. Proposition 1, shall the Board of Education of the Byram Hills Central School District be authorized to expend for budgetary purposes in the school year 2019-20 the sum of $94,534,535 and to levy the necessary tax therefore upon the taxable property of the school district? Be it further resolved that the property tax report card and the school district budget notice are hereby approved by the Board of Education for submission to the State Education Department and dissemination to the public in accordance with law. With that, thank you, a vote? All in favor? All right, unanimous? We're good? All right?
Very good.
Excellent.
We can go on vacation now.
May 22nd. So, all right. Anything else in terms of budget next steps from here? I mean, I think we talked about the process and we know the.
And we will be putting together a short, informative budget video that will go out to our parents in our school community.
I'd say one thing, which is, for those of you who watch this, for those of you who watch this and talk to your friends about it, please vote. Please vote. Every vote is very important to us. We want informed voters coming to the polls, but try to make time at some point during the day to get to Crittenen to vote. The budget only goes so far as the voters take it. So please, please do put this on your calendar and carve out some time for it. We'd be grateful.
Without doubt, well said. All right, so we're going to go to the next item on the agenda, unfinished business 7.1, which is regarding policy 7500, naming facilities, funds, and events. So we've had a couple of discussions now as a board recently about this policy that we had spent a lot of time on earlier in the school year. And I think at the last meeting, there was incentives to bring it back to this meeting and really have a discussion with the full board before it goes back to a policy committee about just directionally where we want to take this. And we don't have to come to a conclusion tonight, but we can. It really depends on where the conversation goes. But just to frame it a bit, I think there are a bunch of different options, and one is obviously keeping the policy the same. That is one option, since we spent a lot of time on it earlier in the school year. The second option is to think about whether or not we want to infuse into this policy more stringent language around the threshold for naming, and we wouldn't have to bat around exact language now because the committee can certainly do that, but something like saying, under the most extraordinary circumstances, or some higher bar than what we have right now, we have high bar, but it could be higher. The third would be to prohibit all naming in terms of, you know, facilities going forward. And the fourth would be a discussion that would say we have facilities today that are named, and that's happened in the past, and as a board, we can discuss that as well in terms of whether anyone, you know, feels like that's not appropriate. So those are potential paths that we can discuss.
It's both facilities and programs.
Funds and events.
Yeah.
Yes. Yep, so I think that's like the framing of it, and we can have a discussion, and if we agree on one of those paths, then I think it would be perfectly reasonable to send it back to the committee to really come up with language if it's one of the three that necessitates a change, or we can continue to have this discussion as a full board. But I just wanted to frame it a little bit, and now I open it up for, you know, for discussion if anybody has thoughts and opinions.
I do. The more I've spent time thinking about this, the more I've become something of an extremist on this issue, I guess. I really believe that district buildings and district programs should not be named after anybody. I think it's, as a public school district, again, to use that expression, we should be out of the naming business. I think recent events have made it clear the risks inherent in naming, whether intentional or unintentional, there are risks. And it can put the board, either this board or future boards, in a very difficult and uncomfortable position. And there's really no need for it. There's no need to have a self-inflicted wound here when there are so many other opportunities to honor people, and you can think of so many different ways to make them distinguished in their own way rather than naming. Because as we all know, naming typically is forever until, unless the policy has changed. As we said, we're sitting here in the Thomas McGuire District Administration Building. There's the Joy Valley Players, I'm just stating the ones that come down. I was speaking to a former board member about this, who I thought would be concerned about the change in some naming, but when I spoke to that board member, the comment was, it's totally, she believed it was totally appropriate in light of the times. And I think we all can, we all recognize what the issue is. And this is not pointed at one program or one person, it's the policy issue or a policy body, but if someone said to me, what would you do, I would have nothing named after anybody.
Would your recommendation be to go back and look, go over the programs that are presently named, and would you direct that back to the policy committee, or would you want to address it here?
I don't need the policy committee for this, frankly. I would say the Board of Education should discuss it, and I don't believe that, my view, and it's just my view, I don't believe we should make these conditions more stringent or try to fine-tune it or carve it up in a different way. We just shouldn't do it.
But are you saying take names off of things that are already? Right. Or are you saying going, starting today?
I mean, I realize that taking the name of Crittenen could present other problems.
Hunter Field.
Well, Hunter Field's the name of a road that carves in, that ends there. But, I mean, Crittenen may have to be the exception that proves the rule, but for so many other things that are named, yeah, I would take the names out. I really would. I just, I wouldn't go, I wouldn't say from this point going forward, we shouldn't do it, we just shouldn't do it. And other boards didn't have to struggle with the issues we have to struggle with now. Different times calls for different results sometimes. If future boards decide they want to get back in the naming business, I guess that's up to future boards, but we know enough now to know what the dangers are in doing this. Anyway, that's really where I am at the moment.
I do feel, I'm sorry. I do feel like we create an albatross around the future board's neck by naming something today, because things can be alleged in the future that future boards would then have to spend an ordered amount of time researching. So I'm more comfortable with stopping from today going forward. I'm not overly comfortable taking names off of things that are already named.
I agree. I don't think we should be in the naming business, and I think moving forward, I'd be comfortable tightening up the language in the policy that we have to make it more definitive that it's really not what we should be doing. But I also feel that previous boards made decisions that I'm sure were well thought out, and I don't feel comfortable taking away honors that were already bestowed unless there's some major issue that we need to. So my feeling is your number two. And I appreciate the way that you laid that out for us in those four different areas because it takes kind of a big issue and it makes it a little bit more concrete in how to move forward. So that would be my opinion, I agree. I don't want to be in the naming business, I don't feel it's our role to do that, a public institution, but I also, you know, on the other side, don't feel comfortable taking away what other boards have already approved.
I would say that, from my perspective, I also agree with so many of the things that have been said. It would take an unbelievable situation for me to be comfortable naming something after someone, so I also feel like being in the naming business is not something that I would take lightly or particularly want to do. And I also agree that the times have changed from, you know, years past, where there aren't as many issues with this particular topic as there already been legitimately. I think that I also feel like going back historically is tough for me to do, given that there are other boards that did have reasons, and it's part of the history and fabric of the district. And without, you know, sort of very clear ample evidence that would suggest something different than that, it would, I'm not sure I would be comfortable personally with reversing the history. And then going forward, I struggle with that the most because I think that, I think it's not outlandish to think we should just put in the policy, no naming, but it's so difficult to know circumstances and facts that are going to have going forward. And we do have a relatively high threshold, which I think we can make even higher, but if a future board many years from now had had a different circumstance, sure, they could change the policy, but I'm not sure whether I need to be so restrictive in the policy to prohibit them from at least having the discussion. So I would come out to say, like, the number two of making the threshold a little bit higher, putting some more language in there, being more restrictive, but still opening up the door to the extent that there is some very unusual circumstance, which I personally, again, would not, would not, I can't envision what it would be, but you never know, and then, and then leave it at that.
I just want to, because we'd have to clarify scholarships and potentially programs, too. Because, and halls of fame and all that, so maybe going back to the naming policy, just bringing that separate bit, makes sense.
Because there is a distinction with that, some of the things we're talking about with programs and buildings and facilities and.
I disagree. I feel that, I agree that we're a public school, and we should not be naming buildings after us. It's just, it's a can of worms that we shouldn't be involved in, and leaving the ambiguity in the policy is, is opening, it's opening us up for issues, and I think that we should be very clear and concise in the policy that there, that we are not in the naming business, and there will be no buildings or programs named after people, period. I don't think we should leave any room for any wiggle room in the policy. If a future board wants to change the policy, then that's what they need to discuss, and they need to change the policy. I don't think that it's our job to leave the policy ambiguous in the event that they want to have that conversation. As far as going back and retroactively taking things away, I think if our policy is that we're not in the naming business, then we're not in the naming business, and that we need to remove the names from existing programs. I agree, Crittenen's tough because it's the middle school. But, you know, I don't know, I'm on the fence about Crittenen. In theory, I think it shouldn't be named after somebody, but I think that if we leave those names, if we leave names on programs, every single time this comes up, no matter how clear our policy is, there's always going to be that conversation, but that we've been having all year. But Crittenen's named after something, but this building's named after somebody, but this program's named after somebody. If that just wasn't in existence, we wouldn't be having those conversations.
Mia, can I ask for clarification? Do you feel the same way about scholarships?
No.
Okay.
No to what?
So that the policy does have to be reconsidered because it has to be delineated?
I don't have an issue with scholarships, I don't have an issue with awards, but facilities and programs, big issue.
I'm uncomfortable leaving, being so stringent with policy, and because I agree with Scott that, you know, there are situations that can come up, could be a student, it can be, you know, that will have, you know, a passionate plea towards this board, and if it's, and if we just, you know, cut it off. I'm just saying, I don't, you know, I don't feel, I feel comfortable bringing it back to the policy committee and looking at it with all of the suggestions that are brought tonight. And I also feel that I would be comfortable taking away names from the past. Like, I'm sort of, you know, on both sides of it, but I don't feel comfortable saying no to either issue. I think it's, you know, it's, it can be a more stringent wording, I agree with that, but, you know, there are, I think you have to look at these, they're situation to situation. I mean, I think that that's, that's what would make me feel comfortable, but.
I think that we shouldn't avoid making a decision one way or another because it's, just because it's hard.
Yeah, I mean, I could see a situation, and this is really a God-faith situation, where there's a tragedy, and someone says, let's name X after so-and-so. And the emotional pull is enormous.
Right.
And the community senses, it's still a mistake.
We have, we have that all the time.
We have that now.
We know, just in the last year, there are situations where that's happened, and it's heart-wrenching, and it's emotional, and the closer you are to the situation, the more emotionally you're involved, and that's why I don't think there should be ambiguity in the policy.
Right, I agree. I agree.
Because when you're emotionally involved, it becomes more difficult to make those decisions.
It's hard to get perspective on the long range implications of it. And by the way, this, you know, it's an interesting issue and certainly there is, there's room for many divergent views here and, but I...
Well, there's not, it's not ambiguity, it's allowing the board to make an educated, you know...
A policy can always be revisited.
It could always be revisited and it's, I mean, we looked at this policy for a year last year and we all were happy with it and, you know, well, sort of consensus and then now, you know, something has come up that's making us look at it again and...
I also would say that a lot of our policies govern the actions of others in the organization, whether that's the administration, the students, the teachers, whatever.
Right.
This is a policy that actually governs our actions.
Right.
And I feel like we are responsible enough and hopefully boards that come after are going to be responsible enough to make their own decisions. And so it's really, in my sense, very circular because we can say no naming, but then the next board that comes along can say, we're going to change the policy.
Right.
So why are we changing the policy? Because it could be redone anyway, so I just, I feel like it's better to just...
Because we spent a year talking about this and we had such thoughtful discussions on this because it was a big deal, because we had to change the policy. And I feel that having to change the policy forces the next board to have those thoughtful conversations about this and to, it is, to make, it makes it a bigger deal.
Yeah.
So having that level of criteria allows that healthy thought and, you know, as I thought about this historically, I did attend a private, a public high school in Brooklyn and it was named James Madison High School.
Where my father attended, I might...
And I think, you know, I mean, to me, it's American and it, it's hard for me to allow some of the misdeeds and the issues that get publicized today to override the, the significance of naming something for great achievement. And I think it's an American thing to do, so I'm supportive, again, I, I don't want to be completely, I think it's an important policy and we have to give it a lot of thought, but I, you know, I think there's a tradition around that that I tend to find appealing to, you know, provide accolades and achievement.
Are you distinguishing between naming a school or are you including programs and buildings and parts of buildings in what you're saying?
It might come in the form of a, a bunch of different things. I don't, I, I'm not a...
You're not limiting it to just the name of a school?
I'm not, no.
No, it's it.
So I, I think having a, a more critical policy which creates a higher threshold for process, it might be an extraordinary event and I don't know what that event could be, but certainly in our history as a country, there have been enough people with spectacular achievement that creates significance around whether it's buildings, parks, public areas that, that, that's been a historical process.
I don't know if you can compare James Madison to Mr. H.C. Crittenen. Or Abraham Lincoln or F.D., you know, I don't know.
Or George Washington.
Right. No matter how good the education may be in Kings County.
But when you're reachable, I was in the Neil Armstrong Engineering Building the other day.
Right, where was that?
We may have a Neil Armstrong.
Yeah.
Yep, so that's fair, right?
Well, we may and if we do, Byron Hills Board of Education of 2037 can, can take a look at it. But we all know what is driving this discussion. Okay, there's no mystery about it. We just didn't decide to pick up the policy, oh, we're going to choose this one again. There was, there were events that occurred which are causing us to look at it again and I think we can't overlook those events because if you do, I think you're going to head into big trouble. Now, right, right now, I don't hear a consensus. I hear, which is fine, I think this has to be discussed, but also I would like to, I think some of this discussion may have to take place in executive session because we're talking, maybe this may result in some personnel discussions. So I would ask that our next executive session, under personnel, we look at this issue again because I think there's some comments to be made that have to be made in the executive session. So I would ask that we do that.
I agree with what Ira's saying, I think that's a really good idea because there are two, there are sort of two subjects here that are pertaining to the same, under the same auspices, but we're looking at a specific incident versus...
And then three distinct views, that's right.
Right.
The same page, no naming versus more stringent language.
I think, I think what I'm hearing here are very, very thoughtful approaches to this.
Yeah.
Everyone, but I do think we need a little exact time to discuss this.
That's a great idea, great idea, very good.
That's why they pay me the big money.
I just want one more comment, which is that I feel that have taken the ambiguity out of the policy also protects us from this becoming a political conversation.
Right.
Also protects us from it becoming a witch hunt, which is, you know, in the situation we're in right now where this is coming back into the public eye, where, you know, this is a situation where this is being, some of this is being tried in the court of public opinion and that protects us from getting involved on that level.
Right.
Because there's just no ambiguity, we don't do it or we do do it.
We are, we are trustees of a public school district.
Right, but there's, that's two issues, that's going back to looking to take away names or stripping things and you're going forward not naming at all, so there's, it's still two different issues to look at.
I think if we have the policy and the policy is not ambiguous...
Right.
That we are just not in the naming business, then we have to go back and remove the naming. If that's our policy, we have to take it.
I think we can choose whichever route.
Yeah, that's my opinion.
Right, right.
We would have to go.
And I also think that, and we are, and we obviously have to make the decision for this institution, for, you know, the role that we have, having said that, there's certainly no prohibition against naming public entities after people look at, we just had the Tappazee Bridge named after someone, whether you agree with that or not is a debate, but it's, but the point is that that's not the issue either. But we have to come back and I think, well, I think it's a great next step, given that if there's sensitivity involved from a personnel standpoint, and then we'll clearly come back and have public discussion because the vast majority of this will be appropriate to have public discussion and we'll...
I thank you, you know, for putting it on the agenda, for bringing it up. I think it's important for the public to know that we are addressing it, we are talking about it, we're very sensitive to the issue and we will continue to be thoughtful and proactive.
Fair enough, all right.
Thank you for all your questions.
All right, thanks everybody for a good discussion. So next we go to our new business item 8.1, adoption of the Southern Westchester BOC's budget for 1920.
So moved.
Well, yes, we write it to the secretary.
You got it on the table, so move.
Yeah, second.
Okay, so I asked for a motion, I asked for a motion, so moved, second. So now let me just go to the language here. So the resolution is at the meeting of the Byron Hills Board of Education, held on Tuesday, April 23, 2019. And then that was Irish Holman moved and then it was seconded by Robin Blatt, that the 2019-20 estimated administrative budget for the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Educational Services in the amount of $186,474,499 be approved. All in favor? Any abstentions? All right, question Karen?
The next resolution.
See hope, thank you.
The vote?
Ah, the vote on the above resolution was as follows, it was unanimous, it was seven to zero. And then this next resolution, I need to do the certification.
The resolution for the, the vote of...
At the meeting of the Byron Hills...
I'll move, I'll move, I'll move resolution C.
Second.
Second, all right. At the meeting of the Byron Hills Board of Education, held on Tuesday, April 23, 2019, Irish Holman moved, seconded by Laurie Canner, that one vote each be cast for Catherine Draper, Liz Fraser McBride and Robert Johnson, I'm sorry, thank you, Lynn Fraser McBride and Robert Johnson, to serve as trustees on the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Educational Services for the time period of July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. All in favor? Okay, Carrie, seven to none. Is that everything?
Yeah.
All right. So any other staff reports?
I just want to make just one quick announcement, is we have a nice little journal sitting at your desk.
Yeah.
And that is a new curriculum journal published by Northern, Northern Westchester BOCs and I was on a committee that's starting to put together the work that we do at Northern BOCs, have published a journal, this is the first journal. And I co-authored an article with our seventh grade math teacher, Anne Rebuswall, where she had conducted some action research initially around the idea of homework. And so I wanted her to tell her story, so I wrote this article with her to tell her journey about questioning her assumptions about homework. And it's a really terrific article.
Page seven, excellent.
And you can read her published article there. And also just want to announce to you, to the community, Jen and I want to elevate the level of conversation throughout the district around homework practices next year and we're using this article as a bid to do that.
That's awesome.
Congratulations, congratulations to you and Mr. Holman.
Very nice, yes, yes.
Thanks for sharing.
That's good.
Any other?
That's it.
That's it, all right. So next we go to board reports. We just have one quick thing to report, which is on Thursday night, there's another Legislative Action Committee, although this is really more planning now that the budget is passed, but there's still, there's still a lot of issues that are out there that I'm sure we'll have a great debate on and try to get organized to make sure that we continue to advocate for public schools. Anybody else have anything? All right, communications to the board, there was one, it relates to the question of the school district's ability to advertise for various nonprofits, which we will think about and address in a thoughtful manner.
It came to me, I forwarded to the superintendent, Scott.
And other than that, I think I would ask for...
There was another communication that I forwarded to you, emailed for the science research program.
Yes, that's, that's right, which is a great event that's coming up in a couple weeks, which we look forward to.
I think there's one other thing to be said, Susan, I don't want you to think that your service on the budget has gone unrecognized, you're very valued to us and thank you very much.
Thank you. We are forever appreciative of all your hard work.
At least until the end of this meeting.
I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Okay, good night, thank you.
Good night, thanks, thank you so much.